Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, December 14th, 2016, meeting of the school committee. At this time, I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. Mayor, school committee, I promise you, I am somewhere over here. We are pleased tonight to welcome the 9th grade academy and the Gilmet Middle String Orchestra on the direction of David Hurtado. Last year was the first time that the Lawrence Public Schools introduced a string orchestra program, and as you can see, it is thriving. Please give them a round of applause.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mr. Praskic, David Hurtado. I'm the string orchestra conductor for both at 9GA and Gilmet Middle School. Today, I wanted to bring the orchestra. I'm very thankful to the school committee for inviting us. I wanted to bring the orchestra to show you the world I want to know. Before we start, I met one of my students. Thank you. As I was saying, my name is David Hurtado. I am the director for the string orchestra both at 9GA and the Gilmet Middle School. Before we start playing, I just wanted to highlight, most of these kids that you're going to see today, they started playing last September. It's only been a process of three months for most of them, like probably like ninety-something percent of the orchestra didn't know how to play a viola or a violin or a cello or a bass three months ago, and I'm very impressed by the progress that they're making, as well, I have students from last year from Gilmet that move on to the 9GA, and then they decided to continue their orchestra journey. So that's something that we have a tweet for you guys, especially with those four kids that did that. And before I continue, before we continue playing, I want to hand on the microphone to one of our students, Haley Cassidy, who was with me last year at Gilmet, and now it's part of the 9GA orchestra.
Hi, my name is Haley Cassidy. I play the viola, and so far for orchestra, I've played for two years. I played at the Gilmet Middle School, and now I play the 9GA. I'm very thankful for orchestra because it's like a family, and I can express myself through this music. Thank you.
Okay, so one thing that also you need to know about me, I'm actually from Colombia. So what we're going to do today is a piece by a Colombian composer named Juan Antonio Cuellar. It's called "Ibno," which translates to anthem, and it's going to be played by only five people of the orchestra, which is Shayna Diaz over here, Catherine Carrillo, Haley Cassidy, Paula Martinez, and Jonathan Sullivan. So I hope you enjoy. And next, we're going to play a very famous piece by Luthi Dambertovens, "Ode to Joy." I hope you enjoy it. Okay, finally, we have one last piece for you guys. Before we finish, I just want to give a big thank you to four people here. One is Mr. Riley. Lieutenant Riley, thank you so much for believing in us for the district of Lawrence. To me, I really appreciate all of them who basically unleashed me in this town and allowed me to build this beautiful project with these wonderful kids. To the principals of both Gilmet and 9GA, Mr. Cory and Ms. Fash, we have done a great job with them, and I hope for many years to come, we can build a big program and why not maybe have an orchestra in every school in Lawrence. Lastly, we're going to play a rock tune, because we can do like orchestra as well. So I'm going to have four of these kids come up front and play a solo part for you guys. Well, everybody just provides, including me, provides a compliment. So please, Shayna, Fernando, Ovani, and Alasia. Thank you so much, everybody, for your time.
Nice job. Good job, guys. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good job. We have just a few short video updates for you. The Gilmet Schools' presentation of "Elf" happened last week. The "Elf" musical was a collaboration of students from grades 5 through 8, which was presented as part of Gilmet Middle School's winter arts showcase. Students from the Gilmet Middle Schools' theater ensemble, dance ensemble, and bucket drummers were represented in the musical. I think many of you know the story, but there was a lot of work that went into this production, directed by Shannon Anderson, Rebecca Welke from GMS Music, Cindy McKean from LPS Musical Theater, and Rene Martinez, who did the choreography. Gilmet Middle School is incredibly proud of its growing performing arts program, which one parent described as "better than Broadway." So this is a short video of that.
Our story begins once not long ago in a little, really frightening North Pole called Christmas Town. Now, this place is special for two reasons. One, there's no Starbucks, and two, everyone hears an elf. Not a day they dance and play, and never sleep much either. What's a piece of quiet be a cry? Of course, I'd love each one of them to dance and need to breathe it because they're just so happy all the time.
Well, I'm not really a Christmas person, so if you get down, down, I'll speak.
Uh-oh, sounds like someone needs to sing a Christmas carol.
Don't you know the best way to spread Christmas cheer is by singing loud for all to hear?
(singing) For at all lost, remember the tree that says to find on elf feature.
To find on elf feature.
For when it comes to Christmas's place, look inside and you know what to do.
You know just what to do.
Look, cheering for the rod on every wall and every nuck.
Tinsel up each corner till it's Christmas everywhere you look.
Give the world a holiday that's bright as can be.
It's white, so darling, sweet, watching the leaves.
Just sing a Christmas song and keep on singing all season long. Think of the joy you'll bring if you just close your eyes and sing.
And if you're short on cheer, think about the year.
You will come to find a red new snow hat fall.
The ornaments you made way back in second grade.
Untangling the Christmas lights.
Took your father several nights.
Your mother claimed that she had proof.
There were reindeer on the roof.
Remember who you were back then.
Let those moments live again and again.
Just sing a Christmas song.
And keep on singing all season long.
Think of the joy you'll bring if you just close your eyes.
If you just close your eyes.
Merry Christmas and good night to all! Ho, 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 ho!
Our last video presentation tonight is about Mr. Gorham's writing class and the collaboration they did with the Breen School. Headmaster Fiatto reached out to Principal Margot Amy at the Breen in September to establish a partnership with his students. He was particularly interested in having Mr. Gorham's Writing Lab, a collection of juniors and seniors, become peer mentors for kindergarten students. We are thrilled to establish this collaboration. Joanne Cushing, Breen counselor and Rich Gorham, LHS teacher, met extensively to plan the program, and I think there's a brief video of it here now.
My name is Monica Sim, and I'm taking the Writing Lab class with Mr. Gorham. It's a very different experience than inside the classroom, because we physically go outside, but we're also working with little children, which in other classrooms, you don't get that experience at all, and it's just something different. Before we head out, we have, we create a list of rules for the children, and then we also like talk about who's going to be writing leader, or how everything's going to be scheduled out and stand up. Kind of have more respect for teachers and how they conduct their classes. I can connect with anybody that I interact with, and that we can always work together to create something that could be substantial, that could be influential to other people, and that if you just work together, then you'll be able to make a change to the community.
My name is Jiron Naverro. I'm 11th grader, and I'm in Writing Lab with Mr. Gorham. It means a lot to me because I write music. It would help me out with like better sentences and stuff like that. We first do like, we write down the rules and stuff in class, and then we bring it here, and we show, we tell the kids how they have to like, like pay attention, be nice, follow rules. It reminds me a lot of when I was younger. They used to help me, like other kids from other schools. It makes me feel good that I'm doing the same as they did to me, so it makes me feel good that I'm actually helping our little kids. What I learned is the kids have a lot of motivation. They have a lot of stories to tell.
And you get to be kind of a role model for the little children, and it's just, it brings a lot of warm feelings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, school committee.
Good evening.
As many of you know, last week, we were informed by the police of the passing of one of our students, Lee Manuel Valoria Paulino. While his passing did not occur on school grounds, it has significantly impacted the school district and particularly the high school. I would argue it's impacted this whole community and this entire city. While we wait to hear from the authorities on answers, I wanted to let the school committee know that we have been active seeking supports for our students and staff members impacted by this loss. To that end, Family Services of Merrimack Valley, Riverside Trauma Center, Samaritans, our FRC Resource Center, and the entire LHS campus counseling team has been working over the last week and a half with individual students and in groups to help process this tragedy. That counseling will continue. I want to thank all of these groups for coming on such short notice as part of our protocol. In particular, Dr. Ann Hall, the school psychologist who's coordinated the response to this event. It's not something that is easily understood or dealt with, but it's something that we've been actively trying to support our students and staff members on. I don't know if there's any questions on that, but I just wanted to let people know what was being done.
Mr. Superintendent, if you could tell a little bit about the communication process with the families of the students during this time?
Sure. So there's been an extensive communication for the high school, both with families and with staff members, who are getting a daily memo and updates on what's happening. There's been permission slips sent home for individual and group counseling sessions, and there's been a lot of monitoring by our staff members when either students or staff are in distress.
Did you guys do any connect ads?
I don't have Mr. Fiatto here, but I believe we did, letting him know about the services that are up, yes.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Piana?
So how would they determine, how would they determine if someone was in distress?
So we could have Dr. Hall come back and talk about that. What I can say is some students were showing obvious signs of distress with tears, or being sullen, putting their heads down, you know, different symptoms or signs. But we also were proactive in asking students if they needed extra support, and many students availed themselves of the extra support, both individual counseling and group counseling, which happened not just during the day, but also happened after school. We actually extended, created a new late bus so that students could, who wanted to stay after school, could get extra support and get a ride home. This weekend, we're doing something for the teachers, and this is just, it's a fairly comprehensive program that Dr. Hall has put in based on research and best practices, and we're happy to bring her to the next meeting if you'd like to go through the entire process.
Just two points, Superintendent Riley. I was talking to a couple of high school students, well, several high school students. I believe they were like 9th grade, 10th grade, and one of the things that they've mentioned was that they definitely appreciated the support that was there with the guidance counselors, but they said that beyond that, sometimes that it's not necessarily that they want to necessarily talk to a guidance counselor, but sometimes in class, the subject will be brought up, and you know, sort of understandable, you know, probably because the teacher wants to focus on the class, the conversation is kind of quieted. And one of the things that they mentioned was that it is very difficult to, you know, it's, they understand there's a division between what happens outside of the school and what happens inside, that when you're inside, it's about academics, but it's very difficult having all of this around you to not discuss it with your peers. So that's definitely something I wanted to mention to you, and as well, I like the idea that there's going to be something that's being done with the teachers, because I think it's definitely not a group that we immediately thought of should be addressed, and I think that's a very good, great idea because it affected them as well.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Paulino?
Sorry. Superintendent, I was part of that conversation with those students last week, and when I was listening to them, some of the things they said is, we tried to speak about it. We've been told that we can't speak about it in the classroom. And I know, this is, I'm quoting them, they say, they have extra staff for support. Thank you for that. However, what they expressed is that they want to be, they want to speak to each other. They want to be able to speak to the peers that are sitting next to them. So they want the teacher to listen what they, what was the perception of what happened to them, and they feel frustrated because they have not been able to speak about it. And this are kids that were classmates of the student we just lost. So I worry about that. I'm saying that you have identified the students that have been depressed, have been crying, but I worry a lot about those students that those who show you how bad they feel about it. I'm 36 years old, and this touch, this incident touched me a lot. It's still, it's hard for me to become seeing such a young guy lose his life. Just imagine how it is for a 9th grader to go through that. So, and I believe, my question is, what are we doing about it? Should we just do a half a day so these students can be in the classroom, sitting around each other, and they can express what they feel? So they, it's hard for them to learn what they are, what they have such frustration inside of not being able to speak what they feel.
So I understand your sentiments completely, and I think some of these things were discussed, and we took a lot of our lead from Dr. Hall, the school psychologist, who has expertise in grief counseling. I actually have a counseling degree, but not a grief counseling degree, and the thing that comes over, over again, time and time, is that students need to be kept in their routine as much as possible, and with that said, students are able to be pulled out for individual counseling and group counseling during the day, and we're having kids, giving kids opportunities after school as well with a late bus. So I think there's many opportunities for kids to talk about their feelings, and it's a tricky situation, right? I mean, it's a tricky situation on exactly what to do. We certainly, you know, the kids had a vigil on the first night that was announced, and those supports remain in place. What comes next? I think we're going to wait from Dr. Hall to see what's next.
Thank you. I know you have professionals dealing with this, but one of the things those students telling me and Piana, everybody was there, meeting them last week, is they want us to speak to the council. They want to speak out of classroom, but they don't ask us how we want to speak about it, how we want to, you know, bend to what we feel. So what about we ask the students, you know, what they want, how they can express the feeling, how they can move on? No, forgive, we'll move on. So we, and this is not my sentiment, is the students, that they feel that nobody asks them, what can we do as a school district to help you overcome this tragedy? And that's my question to you. I know you have a plan, but what about how you speak to the students and ask them what they want, how they want us to handle this situation with that?
So obviously, both the mayor and I were at the high school on many of days over the last week and a half, and talked to many students, and just one example of something the students are going to do that was brought to my attention, is that they're going to do an art show dedicated for the scholarship and Lee's memory. So there are going to be events and things that help kids process this going forward. That's just one thing that's planned. I am sure there are other things being planned by the high school, and I don't know all of them, but that are going to be taking place in the coming days. This is not something that's going to be fixed in a week. This is something that's going to take time, and it's a process, and so what I would say is just ask, if you talk to a student, ask them to reach out directly to their school leader, their principal, about the different options, even though they're being, you know, announced over the loudspeaker and in different places on Twitter. I mean, different things are happening, but you know, we want to be as responsive to our kids and our teachers as possible.
Mr. Chair?
Anyone else? Ms. Piana? Oh, well, why don't we let Ms. Rivera first, or? Yeah, Ms. Rivera.
I was just wondering, in terms of the support, is it mainly being provided at the high school level or for younger children as well?
So there are additional supports that have been put in place at a few schools where families are impacted. We did an assessment of impacted students, and I can't go into very much detail because of confidentiality, and put additional supports on a few other schools as well, where there may have been siblings.
Right. It's just my understanding that as much as parents try to avoid exposing their children to the news and what happened, that younger children were learning about what had happened and having difficulty processing it. I was wondering if there was something that we could do district-wide, especially for parents too, in terms of, you know, developmentally appropriate ways to talk to their children about what's going on, because there's a lot of reports that children, young children, are feeling like they're not safe within the community.
So I think that's a great point. We had a principals' meeting the other day, and I stressed that the central office will have resources available for this very thing. Now, as you know, in our system, principals have to choose, they get the choice, the decision-making, what their community's needs are, so I'm assuming some schools will take us up on this and some schools will not, but I think the resources will be available from the central office, they will be, and it will be on, you know, principals' decision on the impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piana.
Yes, well, actually, my question was going to be around that, if we're doing anything outside of the high school, and I think you've answered that. Just, second thing, just to emphasize, I think what the students were asking, I'm sure that there'll be other things going on in the next several months, what that there'll be other things going on in the next several months, what they were asking for was a space for them to speak to each other. So, you know, I'm sure if that could be taken back to Mr. Fiatto and hopefully worked on.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it back to him. Just having been on campus, I know there, actually, those spaces have been created, but we will continue to do that and make that a priority.
Ms. Mariano?
Superintendent, I'm sure there was a crisis plan in place at the high school. I know that the schools all create one of those. Is there a time when the crisis plan will be evaluated as to the response?
Absolutely. Anytime anything like this happens, you know, we look at the crisis plan and see what matches up and what doesn't, but that won't probably take place until the new year. It's my personal opinion that we need to let things settle a little bit, and we need to focus on what matters most, which is the kids and the teachers.
Could we, you know, in the future, see what the evaluation of their plan was?
Yeah.
And the response?
You know, the last thing I want to say, and I don't want to speak out of turn for Mr. Fiatto, but I know that he was meeting with students about some of these issues today, and they were planning a peace week for next week. And I don't know the details of the activities, but I guess what I want to say to you is the high school has been incredibly responsive to those children, to the students impacted, and we will try to get you details about what the activities are that are going to happen next week during that peace week.
Thank you.
Just another point on the Connect Ed side. Do you know, there's somebody in, one of the staff people that are here, do you know what we do to make sure, to keep that, the phone numbers fresh? Because I worry that, you know, in a community like ours, where there is so much transancy and so much turnover, that maybe, you know, mom or dad come in on day one with a phone number, and then by day 50, or by day 150, there's a different number. Because I did actually get calls, I said, "Well, give me your numbers, I'll make sure you get to the connect," and I passed them down. I just wanted to see, is there, what's the effort like to make sure?
So, there is an ongoing effort throughout the year to maintain these numbers, and I would say it is an ongoing battle, because folks do change their numbers frequently. The good thing about the Connect Ed system is it gives us some sense of when numbers aren't working, and so that helps us to kind of identify some potential cases, but that doesn't cover everyone.
Yeah.
For a variety of reasons, some of these calls go through, but they're, the line has already been taken by another customer. So, it's an ongoing process that the guidance staff, working with the principals of each building, have to go through, and it's part of our kind of daily modus operandi for what we have to do as a district, given the transience.
Right. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. I think, as this committee also knows, we had an electrical fire at the Bruce School recently. I can't say enough about the work of the staff at the Bruce School who were able to evacuate that building, based on the fire drills that have been done and the plans and crisis plans and things that have been put together. The situation, the fire chief commented on how quickly the students were able to evacuate that building, and this is why we do these drills throughout the year, to make sure that our kids know what to do. While no one can predict an electrical fire, I think it could have been worse had our students not gotten out of that building in rapid time. And so, I can't say enough about the staff and the administration, especially the teachers who got our students out. We sheltered in place at the Gilmet, as you know, and the fire department came in and did a great job of kind of containing the fire. Now, the fire was contained to one classroom, however, as you know, when fires happen, there is smoke damage and water damage that was prevalent throughout the entire wing, which forced us to shut down the wing entirely. Students had to be out of school for a period of time, a short period of time thankfully, as the city was helpful to us in securing the St. Mary's lease and getting our kids back in school in rapid fashion. I'm not sure there's a school district that has been able to turn something like that over in Massachusetts that I've seen in the last 20 years in such a short amount of time. With that said, I am planning on petitioning the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for some relief, for making up some of those days. It is likely it won't be all of those days, but some of them will have to be made up, but I would like to have some relief based on, obviously, this is an incident beyond our control, first of all, and second of all, the Bruce School does an expanded learning time, and so they're accumulating more hours than a traditional public school in Massachusetts anyway. So, I will be sending that letter to the commissioner, asking for some relief in making up some of those days. I don't know if there's any questions about that. I can't say enough also about the fire department and what they did to contain the fire and to keep the building as intact as possible.
I just wanted to shout out to, not only to the DPW and the maintenance staff for being able to get the other wing up and going and kids back in those classrooms as soon as possible, without jeopardizing kids' health and welfare.
Yes, I think the DPW and our maintenance facilities folks gave up some of their Thanksgiving, including the Friday and the weekend, to turn this over in rapid time. It was amazing to go in one day and see a school that hadn't been used in 20 years and to come back the next day and see what folks were able to do from the DPW and from the facilities department to get the school up and running. And so, just very grateful to everyone involved.
Did you want to talk about the new location at all? Did you mention it at all?
I said St. Mary's.
Okay, okay. I just, we might have missed it.
Yep. Right down the street here. The students, just so folks know, are going to the Bruce School in the morning, they're getting bussed over, very short bus ride, and then getting bussed back. So, there's really no, there's not a lot of disruption of the kids' routine.
Great. Just because we're talking about, actually, just wait for that. Anything else on Bruce School fire and new location? Mr. Castaneda?
Thank you. I was just wondering, what was the timeline, what would the timeline be on the repair of the Bruce School?
I think it's to be determined. It's likely to go into the spring. It could be the entire year. My understanding is the insurance companies have been involved and are willing to rehab the entire cost of the damage, and so now it's just kind of a race to see how quickly it can be put back together. The good news on the Bruce School is that it is a concrete building that is, unlike other buildings which are, have different materials, concrete is obviously fairly impervious to fire, and so the bones of the building are in good shape, but a lot of work still has to be done. My guess, and I don't know, Mayor, if you've heard anything more recently than I have, is though later in the spring or maybe next fall.
That's what I'm hearing. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, there's a, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, there's a video of the DPW and the maintenance people. We'll show that quickly.
Shock.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Merz, the principal of the Bruce School, and we are here today in our new home away from home at the St. Mary's Elementary School on Heverell Street. We're very excited to be here. The space is beautiful. The students are very excited to be back, and we are excited to see them. We're very, very thankful to Notre Dame High School for allowing us to be in this space and to the parish for allowing us to be here. They've been very welcoming and have offered any kind of assistance that they can, and we're looking forward to getting back to business and coming back to a normal school day focused on instruction.
Good morning. My name is Sister Maria Alice, and I am the president of Notre Dame Cristo Rey High School, and I'm here to welcome the Bruce students. We are here to help in anything we can do to make your transition easy. Don't worry, parents, we've got you covered.
And I'm Dr. Anthony Zavini, and I'm the principal of Notre Dame Cristo Rey, and we're, in this season, we're really grateful to have our new neighbors here on Hampshire Street, and we're just happy that we can be part of the solution here in getting these kids back to school, which is so important.
All right. So, I'm Frank McGlaughlin, I'm the president of Lawrence Teachers Union, and I'm here with Andy Powell, who works for the American Federation of Teachers, and Cheryl Merz, who's the principal of the Bruce School. And the reason we're here today is to bring some welcoming gifts back to the children that have been out of school for a couple of weeks. We really felt badly about the fire, and we know that the children want to get to work. So, all of the teachers in Lawrence decided that what better present to give the children than to give them some school supplies to start their day. And, you know, this is a very welcoming place, and I'm sure all of the kids are going to be successful. And any other way that we can help, the union is here to help. I just want everybody to know that.
School supplies are supplies by First Book, as well as a donation, a generous donation from the Lowell First Book Program to help replenish the school's supply, as well as the backpacks came to us through a generous discount from Famous Footwear in the Braintree Store, and I want to acknowledge them as well. So, it's these partnerships out in the community that come together in these times of events, these types of events, and want to thank the school district as well as the L T U for supporting these efforts.
New Balance and Lawrence gave throw some backpacks and supplies for us, so New Balance has been a partner with Lawrence Public Schools for a long time, and I want to acknowledge them also.
I would just, as principal, would just like to say thank you very much to the AFT and to the Lawrence Teachers Union for all of this very generous donation. The students are very excited and very happy.
So, this committee should know, as Frank so eloquently said, New Balance was involved in this, as well as the AFT. Can't thank them enough. Also, Commonwealth Motors donated jackets, and a number of individual donors anonymously donated to the Bruce Fund to make sure that our kids have what they need and that they were able to get up and running as quickly as possible. So, there's just thank you to all of them. This is a real community that we have here, and when things happen, folks are always willing to pitch in for the school, so we can't thank them enough. Someone had asked me earlier, did the Bruce kids have a gym at the new building? And in fact, they actually do. So, they have a cafeteria and a gym that they have access to. I believe the gym is solely theirs, and then they have their own wing. So, thank you to the Archdiocese and everyone that helped turn this around so quickly. Grants. We have just been notified, so we put it on the agenda, but we will try to get you some more information, that we have been approved for grants, both by the Smith Family Foundation, which is giving a $190,000 grant for early college and career pathway planning at the high school. So, that's a substantial grant, and we're also getting $170,000 from the Nellie May Foundation for both community engagement work and preparing all learners' work, which is regarding cycles of continuous improvement that is taking place at the high school. So, you know, in a district like ours, we're not, we don't have the resources that some other school districts have, some other wealthier school districts have, and so we're always out there looking for foundational support, and we just want to thank both the Smith Family Foundation and the Nellie May Foundation for helping us with the work. I'll try to get you guys some more information on that, and I may ask that you sign a thank you card to some of those folks, as these are often competitive grants, and, you know, I know like with Nellie May, it was Lawrence and Waltham, and I think one other district out of, I think, that 15 or 20 that applied. So, just congratulations to all, and we look forward to continuing the work.
Any questions about the grants? Thanks.
Just FYI, that the winter concert schedule was sent to you, I believe, in your packets over the, before this meeting, of all the different events that are happening for the concerts, folks should certainly try to avail themselves to any and all of these. We have, you know, upcoming events at the Partham, Gilmet, Hennessy, Tarbox, 10 GA, Weatherby, 9 GA, there's just a lot happening at this time of year, and we hope that folks have the time to get some of the, to these events. With that said, Mayor, I think that's it. We'll take final questions, and I think we have
I just wanted to
contingent of public participation.
I just wanted to do a quick update on the, on some of the plant work that's being done, specifically on the boilers.
Yeah.
I know it's not on the agenda, but I think it's important, given the time of year it is. On top of the MSBA application we did to fix the boilers in this building, the capital improvement plan passed by the city council recently, that's put $500,000 for fixing of boilers, and I think that last night, last night, tonight, we sent down to the council, again, for another, I think, $400,000, Chris, if I'm right, for boilers. So, I think most of the boilers that are in need in the district are going to be touched in some way and fundamentally put on a better path than they've been for a while. That's important to note, because that'll be, by the time it's all said and done, if you include the North Common, it's going to be close to, you know, $1,000,005 that we're going to spend on boilers in the district, and this is not what has been normally done. Normally, they put a brand-new thing in, and then they forget about it till it dies. And so, I think that what we have is a more preventive measure, so that we don't have kids cold in the classroom and teachers being able to teach without worrying about the condition of the classrooms for those that's concerned. So, I just want to make sure that we know that. The council is going to be looking at, again, moving, am I right around that? It's like $400,000? Right? And so, if you have an opportunity to talk to a city council about that, it's coming out of a capital reserve account in the city side for Pago Capital, but that vote is not 100% done, but we're pretty sure that the money will be there, and I just want to make sure that people know that we are finally keeping up some of the plant maintenance of our schools.
Thank you. Yes, I can't stress enough, you know, when I first came here five years ago, it was clear that maintenance had been deferred on these buildings for, I would say, decades almost, and I just want to thank the current administration for beginning the process, of which I think will be a long process, of getting these buildings back in shape. We started it with the MSBA, and the city council has been incredibly supportive. I just think we're in a situation now where we have to do this work before we lose boilers and heat from buildings, and, you know, it's something that weighs on me, but I'm just so pleased that we've started the process. So, thanks to all who have been involved in that.
Great. Any questions? Any other questions? Thank you.
Public participation. I have four people signed up for public participation. Mayor, there may be others that don't know that they have to sign up, and would it be okay if they were allowed to sign up?
By all means.
So, if you did not sign up for public participation and you wish to speak?
Well, you should sign up. Make sure you get your name on the roster.
So, Joan, will you come help, in case there's other people? But first up tonight is Mr. Molly.
So, if you're in the audience and you want to speak at public participation and you haven't put your name on the list, please do so.
Honorable members, in these last days of the school committee meeting, we, the citizen and proud parent, are grateful for enormous success of our public school. Now, our public school in the road to become the best public school in the nation. We are thankful to Honorable Superintendent Riley for best superintendent in the history of Lawrence Public School, the hero that rescued our public school. Our city of immigrants has risen up again. Our children have hope, hope of best future, are able to attend the best universities in the nation. We, the citizen, proud that Lawrence Public School now has more Level 1 school, more high school graduate, more MCAS improvement. For the first time, the best parent resource center that our parent could get together. Our teachers, the proud union, must know that 83,000 citizens are behind them, and they are the most important reason for success of our public school. Turnaround plan in the wonderful season of joy, we, the citizen, are grateful to Honorable Superintendent Riley leadership and our teachers and honorable members. With the best Christmas wishes for our teachers and their staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. Is Jeffrey, Jeffrey Coss?
My name is Jeffrey Coss. I'm here to speak on behalf of my fellow alumnis here from Lawrence High School about something that probably you guys aren't really aware of. So, I'm just going to, I'm going to read off something that we all wrote down. I, along with many others, are here tonight to speak on the subject of Lawrence High School and the city of Lawrence itself. Most likely, none of you are probably are aware of the current situation and the plan for the current athletic director to remove head coach Mikey Mean from the head coach position in the football program. As an alumni and resident of Lawrence, to be completely honest with you, we're all appalled and disgusted by this. The city, this city prides itself on its loyalty and togetherness, and we have men in place coaching the youth who not only exemplifies those traits, but does more than half of what the parents in this community do. Having the highest rate of sending kids to college, to places like the University of Miami, Howard, UMass Amherst, UMass Dartmouth, Anna Maria, I could, I could go on and on and so on and so forth. on and so forth, but I'll be standing here like the whole night. Isn't that, isn't what we preach to our youth, is to be student athletes, when you do play a sport? Yet, we have a man in Coach Amin who does, that daily improves it with his actions, not only on the field, but also when he's in school teaching. Yet, we have people in place who wanted to make it all about winning and his record. Maybe he doesn't have championships and all the rings that I myself maybe wanted, and all of us as well wanted. But he, he has left something in all of us that we will carry on for our entire lives. As a former student and a former athlete of his, I, me myself, I can only say this, we all love him as a father figure. Having an article about his football program in a national magazine, about doing things the right way, and having a story done on the team on Channel Five and Fox News, it, I guess it just didn't seem like it was enough. He also made a page on Facebook to bring together the alumnis, after the tragic deaths of former friends and brothers of ours. And also, we had a young individual named Damian Rios, who, I was there, it was, this was my senior year, where we brought Damian to score his first touchdown before he lost his battle with brain cancer. Not only that, he would, he would open up his doors of his own home to bring in the athletes who couldn't stay on their own. He would buy groceries, he would, he would give, he would give his own time to all of us. And I feel like, me personally, and all of us, it's just, it isn't fair, for what, for what is going on, and he just wants one more season with the Lawrence High School to finish it out, and I, we all personally feel like it's just not fair. Not to mention how he had his coaches, how me, as a volunteer, we'd have to cut up our thigh pads, to use them as knee pads, because we didn't get the right order in, and yet nothing was done to fix that. As far as the lack of support that he and the program receives, it's just unthinkable that it's allowed to go on and continue. Maybe we should talk about how Coach Amin started, not only does, again, like I said, he started a Facebook page, he is constantly volunteering for the Vietnam Veterans Road Race, when you can see him himself, standing out there in the cold, alongside his players, handing out water to the runners, helping in any way possible. All these qualities are just a symbol of what this man means to the city. Born and raised an alumni, and a lifelong resident, he has dedicated his life to the city, and to the program, and to the kids who play there. And now we have people that want to say it's not good enough.
Thirty seconds.
What are we teaching our kids that, no matter how much, what you do for your city and school system, it would just throw you away like trash someday? If this, if this committee is truly about the kids, as we say, and we will not stop this from happening, but you will stand together as the city needs right now. As more than ever, embrace the great man we have in front of us, he has earned it, and more importantly, deserves it, I can assure you that this man is allowed to be tossed, that this man is not allowed to be tossed aside, tossed aside the loyalty and support from the alumni this city needs, and we will no longer have. Please, please do not allow this to happen. Thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Like you just stated, my name is Janina Santiago, and I am saying thank you for, you know, giving me the time to do this. I'm twenty-three years old, I'm a 2011 Lawrence High School alum. I'm standing in front of you today to let you know that, with what Jeffrey had just said, to address that issue, like I said, I'm standing up here because I've had the honor of knowing Coach Amin for the past seventeen years of my life. He is a true reason why I'm able to even stand up here and give a speech, because that's not really what I do, but, you know, he was able to see something in me, and constantly pushed me forward to be the best that I can be, and, like I said, I've known him for But when asked if I could, you know, possibly, you know, speak on behalf of him, I knew that I could do just that. Anything I set my mind to, I could do, and it's because Coach Amin has always taught me that at a very young age. He was my gym teacher over at the Lawrence High School, and he was also my gym teacher at the Oliver when I was in elementary school. Yamin is a loyal, caring student, teacher, and he cares so deeply for each one of his students, and every person he's ever come in contact with. His commitment to the students of this city is remarkable, and it's almost indescribable. If I do say so myself, he is one of, if not the most consistent figure that we've had at the Lawrence High School, even far beyond years when I wasn't even there. With all the pain that this beautiful city of Lawrence is suffering, and, you know, has experienced, he is a listening ear, he's a shoulder to cry on, and, you know, he's, he gives you that push that you need. He demonstrates what true spirit, discipline, purpose, and pride looks like, and instills that within his players, within his students. He is truly a remarkable man. He really makes a Lancer look good, and he embraces the cultures and the diversity of the people, the ideas, and the cultures that he is, that is around him, that, and he immerses himself within the cultures of his players, he gets to know them and understand where they come from, their backgrounds, and takes the time to get to know them, and be that role model that he needs. And I don't know, but speaking on behalf of myself, he is definitely the one consistent male role model I've ever had in my life, and I feel like these boys, and what with, you know, the team and the school, and with what everything's going, everything going on in this city, he is someone that we need to continue to support and stand behind, because he gives everything he has to those he comes in contact with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Caban, Mikey Caban?
My name is Mike Caban. I originally wasn't going to speak, I'm actually here to support my son. However, there was a couple topics that were brought up, and I feel that, as a community member, we need to start holding leaders of our community accountable. I want to speak about, I'm going to touch a little bit on the tragedy that happened last week. There was a vigil put together, and also a community meeting that was held at El Talle. I think it was very needed for this community. It gave, I, I work, I've been working with our youth for the past fourteen years, many different organizations, or a couple different organizations, but volunteering, coaching, football, basketball, every day, I'm around young people. Some of you guys know that. So, I, we go to this vigil last week, and, you know, watching these young people mourn, and trying to be there to support, you know, and seeing, you know, a few adults, and some familiar faces up here that were there to support these young people. Then, we proceeded to go to El Talle, right? Spoke to you, Pavel, that was a great job. You know, we broke up into groups, and actually had people talking about what they were feeling. I heard tonight, and this is the reason why I got up here to speak, I heard you, Mr. Paulino, speak about, and you, Mr. Payano, speak about how our young people are, or there's a concern that our young people don't have the outlets to find adults, responsible adults, that they can go to and speak, or they feel like they haven't had the outlets to do so. My question, it's not more of a question, it's more of a statement. I have a really hard time hearing you say this, because while I was at El Talle, I watched you walk around with an alcoholic beverage in your hand, and me, as a community member, if we're sitting here and watching these kids mourn, and we're going to say that we're concerned about them, having a, it was a Modelo, to be, to be exact, having an alcoholic beverage in a time like this, I really feel that that's the wrong message we're sending our kids. So if we're going to sit here and speak about supporting and being positive leaders in this community, we should start, you know, showing by actions, rather than just speaking about it. Thank you.
So, just so we're clear about decorum, public participation, you're not supposed to talk about any specific school board member, and so, I didn't say that earlier, so nobody knew. It's okay, we usually only have one person speaking of public participation, so we didn't do the normal thing, which is we say, you only have two minutes, and you really address the whole board, and not anybody in particular, but I understand some stuff is charged. Mr. Superintendent?
I think that that's tonight's presentation, so if you want to lead us out, Mr. Mayor, to close?
Entertaining motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.